Good evening, if we could call this meeting to order. If we could please start with a moment of silence for prayer or reflection. Thank you. Counselor Varga?
Your Worship, I'd just like to talk a little bit about a special event that went on on April 21st that I was a part of and many city staff were part of. Everybody remembers the terrible accident that happened with the hockey team for Humboldt on April 6th. Well, there was two young guys by the name Logan Little and Nick Kush that kind of took it by the horns and decided that they wanted to do something in tribute to the Humboldt Broncos hockey team. So what they did was got a bunch of people together, a lot of volunteers and a lot of different things. They talked to a lot of different people and on April 21st, they had a function at the Family Leadership Center. What I want to say is that the city was very much part of this. Natalie Sauer and her team at the Family Leadership Center did whatever they could to help out. They helped out by actually donating the ice. There was a hockey game that went on. We had 40 guys that came out to play in it and they paid to play, these guys. So it wasn't like they just came on the ice and did it for the good of their health. They came out as a cause to help out with this because many of them rode the bus. But through Logan and Nick, they arranged a bunch of raffle prizes. They actually had a silent auction and actually everybody had fun from 1 to 4 o'clock. What else they had was a banner that you could sign and it was a huge banner and an actual volunteer banner that both were signed. And I think in the beginning of June, they're going to go up to Humboldt and present this to the Humboldt organization at that time. So we're very fortunate that a lot of people came out to this event. They spent a lot of money, they opened their hearts, they wore their jerseys, they were happy to see the kids playing on the ice, they were happy to do different things to be part of this because most of them are touched by what happened on that April 6th day, which most of us were. So through all their hard work and their number of volunteers, they raised about $20,000, which is amazing for our city to raise in three hours, so it's good. I'm looking forward to actually hear the story when Logan Little and Nick Kush go up to Humboldt with their representatives and present it actually to the team as their contribution from the City of Medicine Hat. So I just wanted to bring that forward and say that it was a great event, very touching and glad we did it and the support for Medicine Hat was outstanding through the staff and through the people of our community and the people that put it on. So thanks to them for doing a great job on this fundraising event.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along now to adoption of the gender for tonight's meeting.
Any additions? Sorry, no, okay, good. All right, sing none.
Next item is adoption of the minutes, item 31, page 4. You'll find minutes from our April 16th meeting.
Any errors or missions? All right, sing none, we'll adopt the minutes.
Moving along now to our presentation for tonight, we have Notice the Ability video and here to speak for that is Sheila Donner, who's our Chair of our Social Development Advisory Board.
Welcome, Ms. Donner, you have the floor.
Thank you. Your Worship, City Council, thank you for this opportunity to introduce the video Notice the Ability. The video Notice the Ability was made to improve awareness of people with disabilities as our neighbors, our friends, and our family members. People with families, with jobs, and hobbies, people who are active and engaged in our communities. After viewing the video, Social Development Advisory Board unanimously voted to move it to the Public Service Committee in hopes of increasing the audience. Thus, it is here for your viewing tonight. The video was made by the Community-Based Local Organizing Committee for the International Day of Persons with Disabilities and SHA Cable 10 and first shown at the DBD celebrations at Roskilde School late last year. Several of the people featured in the video are here tonight. Dwayne Burr, Bernie Ennis, and Sherry Herselman. ACTI then worked with SHA to close caption the video to further increase awareness as well as to model accessibility. Captioning expands the audience to those with hearing loss. The eight-minute video was posted on the city website along with other awareness videos under the Accessible Medicine Hat pages. Dwayne Burr, Vice Chair of ACTI, is here tonight in the gallery. A 30-minute in-depth version of this video is anticipated later this spring and is expected to air from Thunder Bay to Victoria everywhere SHA offers local programming. I'd like to publicly recognize as Chair of the Social Development Advisory Board the hard work that ACTI performs in our community, doing audits, et cetera. They are totally committed to making Medicine Hat a better place for all citizens. I know you will certainly appreciate this video that they have put together for us to view. Thank you.
Thank you.
In 2009, I was injured in a motorcycle accident. Me and two friends went on a four-day holiday through the States and we were just about to Medicine Hat and I was coming up behind a slow-moving gravel truck. We were in an 80s zone and he was doing half that speed maybe. As I got behind him, I didn't see any signal lights, any brake lights, nothing. So I went to go pass him and pretty much when I got right beside him, he decided to turn left to go down a range road and I didn't have any time to stop, nowhere to turn around him. I braked as hard as I could and I ended up hitting him headfirst. Me and my wife, who was seven months pregnant at that time, we were both airlifted to Foothills Medical Center in Calgary and then they found out there that I broke five vertebrae. The vertebrae, the T2, is right at my armpit, so I have no movement from below my armpits, no sensation. Kind of after the accident and you go through everything you have mentally, like you suffer through a lot of depression. I used to always think about the stuff I couldn't do and the stuff I used to do and it's just like a cancer, it just kind of eats you up. And it took me, you know, a good two years to kind of get my head straight and just to kind of flip script on how I was thinking about things, how I'd approach certain things. I wish they knew that I could, you know, I can do anything that I used to do or that they can do, but I may have to do it a different way or, you know, build some adaptation to make it happen. But you can do anything you want to do if you put your mind to it. Things that I love to do, I still do, I just have to modify the way I do it. You know, something may take me, you know, 10 times longer to do if I ask someone for help, but, you know, I still do it. I can still do oil changes and rotate the tires and all that stuff. But now and then you have to accept defeat and ask for help once in a while, but I like to do as much as I can myself.
December 2nd of 96, I was actually down by my bins and I got myself caught up in a PTO shaft on a grain auger. And I have, of course, adapted hopefully quite well over the number of years and like that was just about 21 years ago. Of course, we're so used to using everything with two hands, so I had to not so much adapt, but to learn different things to do, you know, basically, you know, tying your shoelaces, putting your clothes on, you know, buckling the belt and zipping up zippers, all those type of things. So after a while, you know, I did end up getting more used to it, but it was still at times challenging. You know, we can still do all the different things that are in front of us, you know, and yes, there are some challenges with it, but yet we can still lift our heads up and carry on our day-to-day and our work, in our work, in our play, and, you know, love of family. Just that it's nice to see that people can accept that.
I have been visually impaired and up to being totally blind for probably the last just about 35 to 40 years because my condition, which is retinitopigmentosis, it is a gradual vision loss and so it starts with night blindness and then it proceeds into tunneling into a vision loss until I'm totally blind.
They do smell nice, don't they?
I was very depressed. I didn't feel like I had any self-worth. I didn't think I could contribute to society or contribute to financial well-being in our household as a mother or as a wife. I felt that I had really lots of failings and really started into severe depression. And so I made the decision then that I was tired of that. I didn't want to live in that situation and recruited into the CNIB as needing some help from some of the service workers. So I started with orientation and mobility, which gave me some independence of working with the cane and moving forward. I started volunteering for 40 days a week and that actually gave me a really good sense of self-worth. I think that's something really, really important to people who have any type of disability. You still have to have a good sense of self-worth. You have to feel needed, you have to feel that you can contribute to a part of society. And so I really think that you have to find whatever it is. If it's, you know, just being out in your community and showing people that it's doable and it's workable, I think that that's really, really important. I can live independently and it's not just me, there are many, many people living independently with a vision loss and other disabilities with help. I mean, you do not ever go through life by yourself with a disability or not and there's always ways and to do things differently.
Who I am, someone you see every day at school, eating lunch alone. Who I am, someone you tease and point your finger at every time you walk past. Who I am, someone you think can't do anything because she is disabled. Who I am, someone you think is clumsy. Who I am, someone you think is not attractive enough. Who I am, someone you think doesn't talk right. Who I am, the person who can do different things than others can. Who I am, the person who is writing this poem now. Who I am, the person who loves and cares about everybody, no matter who or what they are. Who I am, me, and I am proud of me. Who I am is who you are.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I don't know if we'll call Sheila back down here. Yeah, I don't know if we have any. Yeah, any questions or comments? Counselor Samraaj?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I was just wondering where this video is going to be shared and how it's going to be distributed.
I think it's already on the website. You can view it there and I thought if I'm not mistaken, it's available on YouTube. So you can Notice the Ability is what you would search to find this video.
Does it go out through the schools as well?
Not yet, but I think that's a fabulous idea. I'm sure they could view it, but maybe we should push it in that direction.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Varga?
I actually had the opportunity to meet the first people that were on the video and it's a long time ago. I remember their daughter, I think she was just a baby at that time, I believe, right? At that time, you had no barriers whatsoever. You could do whatever you wanted to in your house and you set it up that way and it was a good thing to see. It looks like you've come a long way since that time. I think it was 2011, I believe, when I first met you, in around that time, so it was, and it's great to see how far you've come and what you've done and that nothing's a barrier to you, so it's nice to see. And good to see you again and look how big your daughter is now, so.
Thank you. Counselor Dumanowski?
Your Worship, I just want to thank the committee for bringing this forward, thank the people who played a role in that video. It takes a lot of courage to be very open about some of the challenges that you face and yet how you can look at life a glass half-full instead of half-empty and it's a testament to all of us, to everyone, that you can overcome any barrier. You need support, we all need support regardless, but having the courage to challenge yourself inwardly despite an obstacle can be an absolutely powerful example for everyone and so I want to congratulate you and thank you for your courage.
Thank you. Counselor Turnbull?
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you very much for making that video. It's sometimes so very easy to get caught up in your own life and not see the people behind the accident and the disability, the real people, what the challenges were for you and others and how you've adapted. I think it's a tremendous story and I will take that home with me tonight.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Friesen?
Thank you and thank you, Sheila, and all the members of your committee and from ACTI and those of you who came who were featured in this film. You know, Counselor Turnbull, you're touched and I am too. It was the first time I saw it and, you know, I know most of these people as well, not all of them, but, you know, it speaks to the incredible resiliency of the human body but also of the human mind and the human heart and to have to deal with the emotional challenges and then come out the other side and be such huge contributors to the community and to your family and to yourselves. And I'm really, I'm really proud of you and I'm really taken with the fact that you're willing to share to the extent that you can show other people, maybe when they're struggling, that there's so much more. And I just, I thank you very much for it. One of the members of ACTI, her son, was instrumental in the production of this video and I think is maybe one of the first ones to come. So when you see these folks in the community, let them know how much you appreciate them being willing to share their lives.
Thank you. Some very good comments. Any other questions, comments? If I get a motion for reception?
Motion for reception.
I'll second that.
Okay, if we could call the question. And that was unanimous, thank you.
Moving on to reports now, our first report's item 51, Administrative Committee Meeting of April 18th. We have two items for adoption, 2017 Annual Report and a Preferred Source PO Order Approval and the rest is for information.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Counselor McIntosh?
Thanks, Your Worship. Just a comment and a question on item number one, the annual report. Anybody in the community who is looking to educate yourself on what is going on in our city, this is an absolute fabulous place to start and I would highly recommend people get their hands on this document. The question I have for the CAO, we're moving into a time when most people are getting their information digitally and we're producing a fairly detailed magazine brochure which comes with a pretty significant cost. Are we getting value for producing this from a publishing standpoint?
Through the chair, so we have very significantly cut back on the number of printed copies. This is primarily now distributed electronically and available on our website. There are still some circumstances where it's nice to have a printed report to hand out, you know, the mayor meets someone formally and wants to hand over an annual report and that sort of thing. So we do have a more limited number of printed copies. We go around every year and ask departments and ask the mayor's office and so on, how many reports do you really need and can we cut back on it? So it's been scaled back significantly and we will continue to look at doing that.
Thank you. Counselor Dumanowski?
I'd just add to the conversation on the report, I especially like it because it has pointed articles that are very short and to the point, so you can literally look at them and take interest in some or none and obviously if there's an interest in it, you can pursue that particular area a little bit deeper, but I like the fact that it's very readable, there's a lot, there's a visual component to it, very, very well done. It's kind of like a great news article in the paper. You have your entry point and if you want to read further, you go to the page three or four, but in this case, you would have the opportunity to go on your website and talk to somebody at City Hall and dig further, talk to your elected officials, so. And I agree, I think there's a digital component into today's society, but there are always people who prefer or need a hard copy for a number of reasons, so, well done.
Thank you. Counselor Turnbull?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to speak on item two, Source Purchase Order for Recycling Carts. There is no capital or spending or operating budget for this purchase as that the cost of this will be temporarily financed by the city and will be paid back by the amount of recycling material that we sell to our new distributor in Canpack. I'd like to comment on these things because I think it's always very easy when you read in the paper about the city spending this kind of money and that kind of money, but whether you like recycling or not, it has a great advantage in ensuring that our landfill is given more and more and more years because we just heard today that the cost of a new landfill is between $30 and $40 million. So for the folks who don't want to recycle, understand that you will help to save, you and I as taxpayers, a lot of money over the years. Item number three is the Tender Recommendation for Delivery of Transformers. This is normal maintenance for our Genko power unit and as you all know, we have just signed some terrific new contracts. We're seeing our revenue increase, we're seeing our profitability start to come back in a big way. So when we see us spend money on items like this, it, you know, they don't just spend it for the sake of spending it. And I can tell you that the Committee, Energy and Utilities Committee, is, we're pretty on top of trying to make sure that, and we don't really have to because they do an exceptional job of researching. So I just wanted to point that out, Your Worship, thank you.
Thank you. I don't like to correct, but I just, just so that the information, I agree with everything you said except for the carts are being paid for by the sale of the MRF, not to the fees on the commodity, but you are correct. You are correct that it isn't a net cost. Any other questions or comments? All right, if we could vote? And that is unanimous, thank you.
Our next report's item 52 on page 65, the Energy and Utilities Committee Meeting of April 19th. This report's for information.
Move the report for information.
I'll second that.
Any comments? All right, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Next report's Public Services Committee, item 53, page 72. Again, this is for information.
Your Worship, members of council, I will move the report for information. You're already aware of item number two with the video you just viewed and you'll also see the goals from the Arts and Heritage Advisory Board, very laudable goals. The group put a lot of effort into this and you'll notice in their goals as well, they want to understand their own awareness in the community and raise issues around this topic area. So very similar goals we've noticed in all three advisory boards this year. They're not the same, but there's a similar flow around awareness promotion, doing some good work on behalf of the community and bringing that information to council. So I really appreciate the work of these advisory boards and these folks are all volunteers for us, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I have a report?
No, thank you. Yeah, any other questions, comments? All right, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Next report's item 54 on page 80, Administrative Committee Meeting of April 25th. This report's for adoption information with the Capital Budget Amendment for Adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Counselor Samraaj?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question for the CAO regarding the funding for this substation. I noticed that some of the money is coming through debenture and some of it's coming through third-party financing. I was just curious about why it was split like that. Thank you.
Through the chair, to Counselor Samraaj. When equipment is dedicated specific to one customer and it wouldn't be invested in for the greater good of all customers, then that is the portion that's covered by them directly. So that's the third party, if you like. It's anything that's past the point of the common utility.
Counselor Turnbull?
Thank you, Your Worship. So I'd like to speak on one, two, and three. One, it's the Capital Budget Amendment for construction of the substation. This is to meet the needs of the construction for Aurora Sun and also Hade to ensure that we are ready and able to provide them with the power once their needs are ready. It's interesting that on both two and three, which is the Tender Recommendation for Water and Sewer, on First Street, we've had over in the past 2017, three breakdowns and it's, the pipes are there are somewhere in the 104 to 105-year-old age limit and on Spencer Street, a part of that pipe has already started to, hopefully I'm not wrong in that, but you can correct me, sir, if I was, has already started to collapse. So these are the, these are the things that our city has ahead of us over the years, pipes that are 100, 105 years old have to be replaced. So again, this is money well-spent and we have no choice but to spend it on these projects. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Our next item's 55 on page 90, Admin and Lead Review Committee, and this is just for information.
If we could vote? Oh, yes, yes, so motion.
Your Worship, move reception.
These things are starting to drive me nuts.
Second that.
Yeah, if we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
And the next one is the same, item 56, page 91, Audit Committee Meeting, just for information.
Move reception, Your Worship.
Information, thank you. If we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
Last report, item 5.7, page 92, Administrative Committee Meeting May 2nd, and this is for adoption for the Temporary Access Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Counselor Samraaj?
Thank you. I have another question for the CAO. I was just wondering whether the compensation agreement with St. Joe's has been reached regarding this temporary road and if, I know it's not a lot of people that are coming through there, but if the neighbors are kind of okay and okay with this temporary road? Thank you.
Through the chair, my understanding is that we don't have a final agreement, but that we've had very constructive discussions and we don't foresee problems coming to agreement with this. If I'm wrong, then perhaps the Commissioner can correct me, but that was the last I heard at least.
Go ahead.
Through the chair, that's correct, CAO, and actually through our open house.
Through the chair, that's correct, CAO, and actually through our open house, but folks, we had good dialogue and feedback with everybody and we don't see any impediments to proceedings.
Okay, any other questions or comments? The solicitor just informed me that the contract has been signed, so. Okay, if we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Moving on now to reports for reception, item six-one, page ninety-nine, Heritage Resources Committee minutes of April the tenth.
I'll move that report for reception.
I'll second that.
If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Item six-two on page one-hundred-and-two, Municipal Planning Commission meeting minutes of April twelfth.
I move this report for reception.
Second.
Any questions or comments? If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Moving on now to bylaws, new bylaws. The first one is item seven-one on page one-hundred-and-seven, bylaw four-four-five-four, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to amend bylaw four-one-six-eight, the land use bylaw. This is a rezoning of multiple lots to low density from neighborhood commercial.
I move for leave to introduce bylaw number four-four-five-four and that it be read a first time.
Second.
If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Next bylaws, item seven-point-two on page one-hundred-and-ten, bylaw four-four-seven-seven, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to open a temporary road and right-of-way on private lands under the direction, control, and management of the City of Medicine Hat and with unanimous consent, this can go for all three readings tonight.
Move for leave to introduce bylaw four-four-seven-seven, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to open a temporary road and right-of-way on private lands.
Second.
And be read a first time, if we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you. You can go for second and third if you like.
Oh, yes, I move that the bylaw number four-four-seven-seven be read a second time.
Second.
Any questions or comments? If we could vote?
I move the bylaw.
Counsel Turnbull, you need unanimous consent to go for third reading, so.
Oh, sorry.
You, you asked for unanimous.
Oh, did we have unanimous consent to third reading?
Get a second or?
Second.
Sorry, I maybe interrupted you. If you move the bylaw and then say can it go for unanimous consent?
Oh, I see, okay, sorry. I move the bylaw four-four-seven-seven with unanimous consent be read for a third time.
Second.
Okay, we're voting on consent right now, unanimous consent? We're getting there.
Yeah, if I stick around long enough, I'll get it right.
And you have unanimous consent to go for third reading.
All right, thank you. I move the bylaw number four-four-seven-seven be read a third time and passed.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All right, if we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
Next bylaws, item seven-point-three, page one-hundred-and-fourteen, bylaw four-four-eight-six, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to amend bylaw four-three-one-one, the administrative organizational bylaw, and bylaw two-two-seven-zero, the procedure bylaw. This can also go for all three readings with unanimous consent.
Your worship, I introduce bylaw number four-four-eight-six and wish it read a first time.
Second.
If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Your worship, if I may, I would like to introduce bylaw number four-four-eight-six and have it read a second time.
Second that.
Any questions or comments? If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Your worship, at this time, I ask for unanimous consent to have bylaw number four-four-eight-six be read a third and final time.
I'll second that.
Any questions? If we could vote? That was unanimous.
Your worship, at this time, I would like to introduce bylaw number four-four-eight-six and have it read a third time and passed.
Second.
Any questions or comments? If we could vote? That was unanimous, thank you.
Our final bylaw tonight's, item seven-point-four on page one-hundred-and-fifteen, bylaw four-four-eight-eight, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to incur indebtedness in the amount of seven million five hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of construction of electric distribution substation.
Move for leave to introduce bylaw number four-four-eight-eight, a bylaw of the City of Medicine Hat to incur indebtedness of seven-point-five million dollars and be read a first time.
Second.
If we could vote? And that was unanimous, thank you.
Moving on to notice of motion, item eight-point-one, page one-hundred-and-nineteen. I received from Counsel Samraj, a motion for consecutive term limits with unanimous, with, sorry, two-thirds majority to waive the notice. You could debate it tonight, but you would need your two-thirds majority.
Go ahead.
Do I ask for that now before?
Yes.
Okay, could I have, could I bring this motion to the table, please?
For, for debate tonight?
Yes.
Okay. All right, if we could vote? Oh, yeah, I don't know if I've had a second yet, sorry.
Second.
I've got a second here, okay? And you have a two-thirds majority, so you may introduce it and discuss it and we can debate it tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion that the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association considers supporting an amendment to the Local Elections Act to allow municipalities the freedom to set consecutive term limits should they choose to do so.
Okay, can I get a second or?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? We're not voting yet on this one. Any questions or comments? You want to speak to it in any way?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Counsel Samraj.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to give a little background on this motion since it, it might be a little confusing here. Occasionally there is, there come issues before this council that we are not able to resolve here and we need the intervention of other levels of government to, to assist us with. This is one of those things. The, the issue of term limits has come up sporadically here and there in Alberta and across the country, but the discussions are mainly academic because in order for anything to actually be done, the provincial legislation that governs local elections would have to be amended to allow, to allow this type of rule to be, to be even debated. The, what I am suggesting here is a process by which we ask the Urban, the Alberta Urban Municipalities Association at their convention this fall to debate this motion to see if there's any kind of broad support for this type of rule to be included in, in the legislation there. So voting for this motion is not, it does not indicate any support for the idea behind it, it is purely to bring, to bring this debate to the, to the convention this fall. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Counsel Dumanowski?
Well, your worship, I voted against it, so I, I think the public and you deserve to hear my thoughts. So at first blush, it may appear significantly much like a self-serving vote to oppose this even going forward to AMA. I, like you, respect the AMA and respect the process for changes that could be brought forward. I recall many terms ago, resolution to have the province, or challenge the province to look at a four-year term. It took this many years to get it here, quite frankly, it took too, far too long. Where I have challenge with this, obviously as a multiple-termed city councillor, is not with myself, although you may imagine otherwise, it is with the even prospect of asking for another level of government, because an AMA would have to lobby the province, to interfere on a municipal level and ask, and to even give the opportunity for a council of, of the, this peer, the group of peers right here today, or a future group of, of council members to, to even decide this. Where I'm fundamentally opposed is that we, even in looking at this, are precluding the public from exercising their democratic right. We talk about pub, public, pardon me, other levels of government interfering at times with our decision-making autonomy at a municipal level. We talk about, we celebrate the fact that we have a legacy and a heritage in this community that has proudly served this community for, for over a century. The prospect of even putting this forward, never mind having it materialize notionally and, and literally, is challenging for me because I believe the public has the ultimate right at election time to make that decision. Precluding the public from having their democratic opportunity every four years now to choose who they want to represent them around this table would, would directly be impacted by a political, a politically motivated term imposition that potentially could come out of this. I rarely, I try to keep myself as humble as possible when I, when I serve for the public. I really do. I have confidence in my role and in the time I've put around this table, but I, but I, I find it hard to believe that, that if the public had not wanted me here for a consecutive set of terms, that they would have put me here. That's not an arrogant comment, that is not meant to challenge others, but the public have spoken. We're all here because of that. We were all here at one time, for the first time, some of us for the second time, and so forth. I just feel it's another layer of political interference. Ironically, in this case, it would be a municipal, municipally organized petition to another level of government whom we are challenged by, often by the, the levels of bureaucratic rigor and, and imposition that they put on us, and yet we're asking for it. I, I, again, will go back to, this isn't about me. This is about interfering with a democratic process, this is about interfering with the public having the same, and it has more to do with politicians trying to regulate politicians, and I, and I'm fundamentally opposed to it.
Thank you, Counsel McIntosh.
Thanks, your worship. Just a quick comment. We have several advisory boards that this group of people around the table appoint, and a number of those boards have limits. Yet the people that sit here don't have any sort of a limit, so that, that is a bit of a quandary for me. I think this would be great to have this discussion at the AUMA table to give communities across the province the opportunity to, to talk about this, and just having this conversation here tonight will bring feedback from the community. And if we don't have that discussion, I think, I think we lose out, so I, I will be supporting this moving forward.
Thank you, Counsel Turner.
Thank you, your worship. I kind of have mixed feelings on, on this. I guess to some degree, when, when people talk about term limits and, and if you look at other levels of government, you'd certainly see these career politicians and because they're making salaries that are in excess of a hundred thousand dollars a year, I don't think that is an issue with our city council. And I think you don't really run for council really to, for the money, I think it's because you want to serve your community. And, and I do agree with Counsel Dumanowski's comment that it should be really up to our citizens as to what your term will be and how long you, how many terms you're going to have, and not let another level of government dictate that to you. So I think based on that, I will not be supporting this motion.
Thank you, Counsel Turnbull.
Thank you, your worship. So I think you've been a great Alderman councillor, so this is not any means of, of saying that it's personal, it's not. For me, I've always believed that term limits is ideal. If you look at the stats in our, whether it's provincial, federal, or municipal, if you are on or, or an existing elected person, your chances of getting re-elected are substantially higher than those who run for the first time. And so I think it is, there are so many great minds in our city who could, could do such a great job of, of representing the people of Medicine Hat. And I think I'd like to see as many people get the opportunity to run. It's not easy to run, as you know. It's time-consuming, it's hard work. But at some point, I always think that sometimes, and maybe you, you and Counsel Friesen are exceptions, but a lot of times is you get so used to the forest that you can't see the trees. And, and times change quickly, people have to adapt, and I, I am going to support it. It doesn't mean that this council will have to, to support what the limits would be. It might be that you can serve two limits and, or two terms, and you have to sit off one, you can run again the following. It could be a whole bunch of different scenarios. I, I really think it, we should, at all possible, try and get the most variety of people running for office as we can, and so I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Friesen.
Thank you, your worship. Well, first of all, Counsel Samraj, while I appreciate your thoughtfulness in developing this, because I know you've spent a lot of time and, and done a lot of consultation around it, I, I, and I appreciate that, I just respectfully cannot agree. And I feel a little funny saying it, like Counsel Dumanowski said, it's to be one of the ones that speaks against it because I've been here for a considerable amount of time. And by the way, I've had a couple of breaks as well, so it's not consistent, pardon me, consistent amount of time. But you know, this, I don't see this as about me. I see this in terms of democracy, the very fundamentals of a democratic society, and the right of the local electorate, electorate in their freedom of choice. And freedom of choice is an absolute underpinning of democracy. And so I, for me, to let the province of Alberta, or any level of government for that matter, interfere or create restrictions on the right of the people to exercise their democratic right to vote is probably fundamental to, to robbing them of, of, of some of those rights. I, and I also think that perhaps, and I don't know, but opening up, opening, opening this kind of debate, and, and perhaps if it was passed or not, might take the lid off the box of other potential limitations and regulations, even like who, who can run for office. You know, it's fine, let, let's talk about the terms and then maybe let's talk about who could, you know, like, only the people that you think are the right people can, can run, that kind of stuff. It's just like once you, once you take a lid off a box, all kinds of other things start to become more acceptable in the discussion. So that concerns me a little bit, because I truly and honestly believe, and it is not about me, it is about anyone who feels that they wish to run for public office should have that right, and it is up to the people we serve who vote to make the decision about our terms of office, because they can decide that quite easily in their vote, and we won't be here any longer, and that will limit the term of our office, so I will not be supporting it either.
Thank you, Counsel Samraj.
If I could follow Counsel Varga, thank you.
Okay, sure, yeah.
Through the chair, I'm going to be supporting this. I, I think it's worth a conversation. I don't think anything can happen that's bad with a conversation that might happen at AUMA. I, I know that a lot of different things come up at AUMA, but this is worth a conversation just to see where people are within the community, within the municipalities. I know smaller municipalities might not have enough people to even run for office to, to do this, so it, it might be totally rural against the urban, who knows how it's going to be, but I think that's worth a conversation to see where the, where the people of Alberta, the, the electors of Alberta feel about it. I, I agree with you, Counsel Dumanowski, it's, it's all about the people that, that are voting you in, and we work hard for that when we are at election time, and, and it is the people that select the people that they want to get on there. But I don't think a term thing is, is that bad, I really don't. I mean, if the President of the United States can only be in there for eight years, it's, it's not a bad thing, I don't believe. But anyways, moving forward, I think it's, it's worth a discussion that we might have, happen at the AUMA. It might not even get to that point. It might, might not even be able to come up at that point at the AUMA, they might not even bring it up at that time, but it'd be worth something to discuss, so I'll be supporting it.
Thank you, Counsel Samraj.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are very good arguments for and against term limits, or, I mean, I'm talking about specific consecutive term limits in my motion here. I think that is putting the cart before the horse here. In order for the AUMA to have this conversation, which I think is a very important part of the democratic process, and I appreciate councillor Dumanowski's commitment to that process, we need a motion from some municipality to bring this up for discussion at that point. I think to councillor Friesen's concern about a potential slippery slope here about other restrictions that may come up, I think it is pretty premature to talk about all the things that might happen when we haven't even started the first step on this conversation here. And I wanted to clarify that what I have asked the AUMA to consider is an option for municipalities to consider this. There were two councillors in Calgary that tried to pass a similar motion regarding term limits in January. What they asked for, they asked the provincial government to amend the Local Elections Act to set a strict three-term limit for all municipalities. That motion failed, and I think rightly so for good reason. I think the Minister of Government Act recognizes that you need to have flexibility when it comes to local governance approaches. And you know, councillor Dumanowski talked about interference from the provincial government in this, and which you imply is what I'm asking. In fact, the interference, I think, is from the inflexible approach that currently exists, that even if a municipality wanted to consider this, they are not able. But once again, I mean, these are, you know, I think there's a lot of good things, like good conversations and debate that could come up. I think the AUMA is the appropriate place to have this conversation, and so I am respectfully asking to be able to have that conversation at AUMA. Thank you.
Councillor Dumanowski?
We could go round and round. 2001, 36 candidates. I was one of them. So I was elected by accident, or by chance, or by the public. I ask you to fill in that dot. The public decided, and they have decided since then, to put me back here. And when I think of some of our finders, those of us who have lived in Medicine Hat our entire lives and are invested in this community, Harry Viner, if that name rings a bell to you, Ted Grimm, if that name rings a bell to you, these are people who had multiple terms in public office, who I don't think anyone would disagree, poured their heart and souls into building this community, and many times were even compared to them, or to their era, or to the decision-making that they had. I'm not trying to build a name for myself, but I really believe that this motion is a direct attack on people who have served this community and have been elected democratically to serve this community. And I'm disappointed that it's even here today.
Thank you. Councillor Hirsch?
Well, as a person that didn't really chime in, but I kind of feel a little bit obligated to. You know, I've actually philosophically went back, as I read, you know, that the motion was going to be brought forward, chatted a little bit with councillor Samraj today. Was a little bit torn on it, because for me, I don't feel, in terms of if I feel like my service is no longer required, you would see that in the polls. But when it was deliberate, when I asked specifically with councillor Samraj's attempt, and I think, you know, again, there's always the motivation factor, and he's got very excellent ideas in terms of increasing the voter turnout at the election. Admirable idea, and I think it's something that we should be doing as well. Everyone takes that vote, quite frankly, for granted, and I think more and more, we need to reinvigorate that idea. You know, whether or not your politics of the day, right now, it's a very passionate discussion at every level of politics at this point in time. So that vote, I hold it at high regard. The other option, or the indication that I heard from councillor Samraj was the youth to serve, and maybe to get a youth group or people more invigorated with the idea of politics. And while I actually applaud the idea, quite frankly, it was grade six for me, and here I am. So, you know, as far as the youth goes, I think there is a desire still within the community. I'm not so sure if I'm sold on the idea of having a person that is very capable, in the eyes of the voting public, getting reelected after reelected, having to move over just out of fairness. So I'm struggling a little bit, but I'm starting to feel the need not to support this. And as an individual that wasn't on council a couple terms ago, but actually kind of co-founded a group, if you will, and a movement within the City of Medicine Hat to elicit change, that was done by a lot of individuals that cared about this community. And we, in fact, all it was, was an enlightenment. It was talking about issues and having a formal discussion, and we hosted some events. And I think, quite frankly, again, if I look at the definition of democracy in my mind, it is to allow the people to decide. And I just think we need to keep democracy alive. Do not limit anyone. If individuals feel they want to serve, I'll tip my cap to them, because it is, you know, a thankless job, quite frankly. Going forward, if we were to carry this forward, that would mean that five people off this council would have to step off, including, and that's plus the mayor, so six people. My concern would be a vacuum of knowledge walking out the door because of a term limit. Then where does the direction of this council on a go-forward basis happen? I'm a little bit concerned on the direction that a council could go. We just recently got elected. We just did our strategic planning. It's very similar. My fear would be if all of us were to walk away, you could get a brand-new council that says, okay, administration, we used to want to go that way, now we're going that way. So, you know, it was just, it's very disruptive. And again, I've thought about this in great detail, and it could go either way, but again, I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Samraj?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, that some of you feel personally attacked by this. I feel bad about that. That certainly was not my intent, and I understood this would be controversial, and this is my least favorite aspect of that. But maybe I can talk about some of my rationale about how I came to this. You know, it's true, we have had members in this community that have served a long time, Harry Viner and Ted Grimm, they have served plenty of years. But the other thing, if we're looking at the history of this city, we also know that voter turnout in municipal elections has been steadily decreasing for the last few decades. I think we had the lowest voter turnout that we have ever had, 37% at the last election. For me, democratic systems are not static. They need to change. I mean, sometimes you need to experiment, and you need to tweak things a little here and there. So I think, once again, I mean, councillor Hirsch's comments about the specifics about whether term limits would make sense for this council, it may not. But I think, once again, we're putting the cart before the horse. It may make sense for some municipality, but we are prohibited from doing that, and all I'm asking for is to have this conversation at the AMA convention. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Turnbull?
I guess we are going around a little bit. Just to councillor Hirsch's point, obviously, if the province were to allow municipalities the choice of whether or not they wanted to have limits, you wouldn't walk in here and say, okay, the mayor's had two terms, he's done. No, you would grandfather that. You would say, if we're going to pass a bylaw that says you would have two terms or three terms, and then you must be off, then you'd get your three terms, and the mayor would get his, if that's what he chose to do at that time. So I think that's a little bit of a red herring, and I know councillor Hirsch and I are pretty close, but I think that we would never, no council would pass a rule that would put this city at risk. I mean, surely we're all experienced and educated enough that we would ensure that anything we passed would not hinder our city moving forward, so.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna, we are going around a little bit. Councillor Hirsch, of course, you can speak again, but I think, other than the councillors that haven't spoke, I'm going to limit to that for you. Go ahead.
Bless you. Thank you. Just a final comment in regards to that. So if you let this unwind, and you let this allow it to go forward, even in playing out in Medicine Hat or a Lethbridge, where you've had a couple term individuals, now, you know, now you're going into having the split hairs in terms of electing officials to prevent this from following, is that you could have five new councillors be sworn in, them being very successful and sitting in their two terms and doing really well, and having this gone all over again, where you'd have five would have to come right back in as brand-new. The only way to circumvent that, of course, is now you'd almost have to say, okay, let's allow one to have one term and the other to have another term to allow the, because in any kind of committee, it's nice, healthy to have a third of the committee departing, a third retaining, and a third new. I get that point. My point I'm trying to make is that I think democracy in its ultimate raw form is a true test of who's willing to put their name in the hat regardless of how long they've been in. And I appreciate the comments in regards to allowing individuals and to drive the voting, but I guess my point is, it isn't as much as who's putting and who's been there the longest, as to the wave of passion of individuals within this community and others that could bind together and put a focus on an issue or a passion that I think could elicit some change. So with that, again, I'll move forward.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'm going to call the vote. And that is defeated five to four. Councillor Samraj, I got to give you kudos for having the courage to bring something like this forward. That was a tough one, and I remember when I was a brand-new councillor, just like yourself, I brought forward a notice of motion for a heritage trust fund, and it was passed 10 years later. So keep at it, okay?
All right, so moving on to new business, item 9.1, Appointment of Chair to Assessment Review Board. So we've had some changes to the MGA and the regulation that governs the Assessment Review Board that hears tax appeals. Previously, the board members would elect a chair amongst themselves. That has now changed, and now council must appoint a chair to the Assessment Review Board. And I have a motion here, I'll read it out, that be resolved that Don Knutson be appointed as the Assessment Review Board Chair, effective immediately, with the term to expire December 31, 2018.
I'll move. Second.
All right, any questions or comments? Okay, if we could vote. And that was unanimous. Thank you. Seeing no more business before this council, we're adjourned.